I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Little? Jelka?
Schwartz?
Here. Please join us for a moment of silence as we reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first entertain a motion on the agenda as received or amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Tom, just checking, is your audio working? All right. All right, we'll now move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the boardroom or on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment on something that's not an agenda item, please do so at this time. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures that the county auditors be authorized and directed to issue payments against a very settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, so moved and seconded. Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $1,125,481.06, and we are paying from the 60-40 fund $2,567.97. We are paying for a few large items today. We are purchasing a motor grader for $450,420 from the road fund. We are also paying quite a bit of construction on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail to tailor a total of $255,765.86. We're also paying origin for design on Cedar Valley Nature Trail, $51,538.37. We've also got a $25,000 payment to Crystal Heating for the Conservation Admin Office, HVAC project, and also we're making a payment on Casey Lake in the amount of $88,954.38. I think those are all the large items today. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions?
All right. Any questions, Board? All right, you're not hearing none. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little? Tom, we don't show you as being muted, but we were unable to hear you. Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next, we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. Yesterday, we closed Union Road, and this is the portion between the Cedar Falls city limits and the Beaver Hills subdivision area. To work on two bridges, this is contract bridge work, we need to do some deck patching on that portion of the road, the bridges, excuse me, one of the bridges. Last night, we had some vandalism. All of our signs, the county's signs, as well as the contractor's signs, were thrown all over the, were thrown into the ditch, and the sandbags were cut. We don't believe our electronic message boards were damaged, but we're still checking on that, and we will be working with the sheriff to, for assistance on that. I understand this is an inconvenience for those folks. They're asking for some dust control to be applied on Butler Road, which is a gravel road to the west of that. At this point in the year, we are not going to be applying any dust control, and in fact, we need to start blading the roads over the next two weeks because typically by Halloween, by October 31st, the roads are frozen at night, so we want to get the roads shaped up in a good shape for winter conditions. I just wanted to let you know this because it is going to be very dusty out there in the next couple of weeks, and if you receive any complaints about Union Road being closed. Can I answer any questions at the time, at this time?
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Roy Giving, Facilities Director. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the courthouse remodeling projects. As most of you know, the Elections Department is up and running. As of early this week, we just finished up the asbestos removal on the future auditor side, and the demo has been completed on that side, so that is going fairly smoothly. Some of the hangups that we've really been seeing is in line with the laminate. So if you do go over to the elections area, you'll notice the countertop is a temporary countertop, and that's due to some of the constraints that we're seeing with the manufacturers on laminate. And so to hopefully correct that moving forward, when we get to the Treasurers Department, our consultants are looking at some possible other alternatives, whether it's a different manufacturer or what have you, to try to correct that problem. But for the most part, we are ready to go down in the basement for the in-person voting here at the courthouse. The conference room is all set up for that. We have a new camera system, or a new camera outside that area, so we can have visual on the whole lower level of the courthouse, which is a nice adder. So yeah, I think we're ready to go and get through the elections, and then we'll get started on the movement of the Treasurers Department.
Very good.
Has there been any response on laminate as far as, I mean, I know everybody's probably trying hard to get that in. Have they given any responses?
Just that the, it comes down to the manufacturer and delivery. I don't know if there's just a large demand of laminate, if it's, it could be manufacturing plants located in areas where they've had disasters. I know we've seen some of that in the past, so I think there's probably several different issues, but not just one has been identified to us. If that answers your question.
So we don't have a timeline, really, of what?
No, no, it's, it's been, it's been a bit frustrating. Fortunately, though, we've been able to adapt and overcome, like I said, with the countertop, where even if the laminate came in today, we would hold off now until after the election just so we don't disrupt them. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Sandy Smith, Recorder. I just wanted to give you a quick update today on something that you will be hearing about soon if you have not already. There is an initiative underway to raise recording fees in Iowa. This is something that has not been done since 1985. So there will be legislation put forth this session, and I'm hearing there's overwhelming support from our stakeholders. So I just today want to give you information to read through, and please come see me if you have any questions. Page three on this will tell you what the increased revenues may look like for Blackhawk County for one year. So, Tom, I'll get this sent to you as well today.
1985, that's way in the country.
I think it was five years old.
All right, any other department heads, elected officials, wish to provide an update this morning? All right, we'll move on to the minutes approved from the October 8th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion and questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Can you hear?
Yep, we hear you now.
Yeah.
We're voting on the consent agenda now, if you didn't catch it.
Okay, I'm gonna start over. Leyland?
Yes.
Little? Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Item seven, this is other business. This is a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Heartland Business Systems of West Des Moines, Iowa, for acquisition of VMWware, or VMware, VSphere Licensing, for a three-year agreement of $5,475.84 annually.
It's garbled. You can't understand it.
It'll be awarded for the chair to sign for the same as recommended by LUIT Director.
Hi, Board. LUIT Director. Sorry, there's technical difficulties with Zoom, so the audio that they're hearing is garbled. I don't know if there's a whole lot I can do about it right now without disconnecting everyone, but we did hear Tom speak, so.
I can't hear anything on the meeting.
Hal, is there a call-in number we could suggest?
There, there is a call-in number. We can, we can hear.
I could text him in.
How's their station?
We can hear them clearly. They can't hear us clearly. It's garbled. I know. Beyond disconnecting that mic and the ceiling, I don't know what else we can do.
Do you have the phone number otherwise?
It's, it's in the, the agenda in the front. You want to just connect that real quick? One second, sorry, Board.
Doesn't sound like they're gonna get it, folks.
Supervisor Little, can you hear us, or is it garbled?
There we go, finally.
All right. Good. Thank you. Sorry about that, guys. Okay.
All right, we are on item seven. Lowest reasonable bid from Heartland Business Systems of West Des Moines for the acquisition of the VMware VSphere Licensing.
All right, yes, VMware is the software that runs our, our virtual servers. I did send you guys information on that. It's essential to have those for the server, otherwise they pretty much don't work without the software. The, the price was really high when Broadcom bought VMware, but since then, we kind of waited, and now the price has gone down, so this is probably the best time to renew the license.
All right, Board, any questions?
I think you need a motion.
Yes.
Hello?
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Excuse me. Little?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Item B, this is resolution that the Amendment to Modus Engineering Proposal for Actual Design and Construction Administration for HVAC Improvements at the Jail Pinecrest and the courthouse, lump sum fee of $316,100. Be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same as recommended by Roy Giving, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roy?
Yes, this is, if you're.
Can't hear again.
Can you hear now, Tom?
All right, well, unfortunately, Supervisor Little may not be able to hear this, but, so if you recall, several meetings ago, the Board did approve the preliminary design performed by Modus Engineering of an hourly rate not to exceed the $45,000. That portion has been completed, so now this is the amended design fee, which at that time said, we said that this would be coming. And so this amount of $316 is consistent with the budget and the fees that were submitted to the Board of Supervisors earlier on. So this is just the total amount for that design fee for both the, for the Pinecrest Health Department and Movement.
All right. Any questions, Board?
Not again here.
This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little? Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. We will move on to item C, discussion on 2026 roadway improvements on Raymond Road.
Okay, good morning, Board. Can you hear me, Tom? Okay, at issue today is improvements to Raymond Road between the Gilbertville city limits and the city of Raymond, and this is work that is proposed to be constructed in the 2026 construction season. So what is the issue? Currently, the county has a 28E agreement with the city of Raymond to maintain the shoulders in the Raymond city limits and a portion of Dubuque Road, and on Raymond Road from the city limits, the split portion of the city limits included, up to Dubuque Road. And if you, some of you have, I've given you a map, so you can see the portion that is in the entire city and also the split jurisdiction portion. This portion of roadway is the highest traffic volumes out in the county, so about 6,100 vehicles per day, according to Iowa DOT, the 2021 traffic counts. There is a high number of truck traffic that travels on this roadway, this portion of the roadway, because they're going from Dubuque Road over to Highway 20. So it's obviously in our five-year plan to resurface this portion of Raymond Road at approximately a cost of $2 million. And like you can see on the map, 1,326 feet of this are a split jurisdiction between Blackhawk County and the city of Raymond from Young Road to the north. And the issue is some of, is our ability to maintain it, some of the safety edge, some of the safety issues we're seeing over the years with the maintenance. It's hard to do maintenance on that road, and I'll explain that here. So this, these photos were taken last week. This is on the portion of Raymond Road that is either a split jurisdiction portion or entirely in the city of Raymond. And you can see that there are large drop-off, drop-offs right off the asphalt pavement that developed. A lot of times semi-traffic in particular. This is a 12-foot lane. The traffic is off-tracking onto the shoulder, and it's causing this edge rut. It causes rocks to come away from this drop-off, this edge, creating the drop-off, causing the rocks to move over on the shoulder, and it's occurring on both sides of the road in the city of Raymond portion. You can see that some of the asphalt is breaking off due to that heavy truck traffic, agricultural traffic, just traffic getting off and driving on the aggregate shoulder. This happens over time. This is another further photos. Recently, Dollar General has been construction, constructed, excuse me, on the east side of the roadway, very close to the Dubuque Raymond intersection. So this was the current conditions. We're concerned that that will further exacerbate with more trucks coming to the Dollar General. And the reason we care about this is, as I've said, is we have a 28E agreement with the city of Raymond. We, it's our job to maintain those shoulders. We have a special truck that allows us to fill in these edge ruts. It just takes a lot of time away from when we can be edge-rudding our own miles. We have approximately 230 miles of asphalt roadways, paved roadways, so 450 mile, lane miles that we need to be focusing our edge-rudding, the attention to. The city of Raymond, we do invoice them. We do charge them for that, the work, the actual cost of the work, so it's not necessarily a matter of them not being able to afford the maintenance or us not doing the maintenance. It's just we don't have the time to always get out there as much as this needs to maintain that, that edge ruts that develops. In 2017, the county did a safety project where we added widened shoulders. We paved the shoulders from the Gilbertville city limits up to the city of Raymond, and we had the same discussion. On the west side of the roadway is county property. On the east side of the roadway is the city of Raymond. How are we going to handle that paved shoulder? So I will, I will get to that in a minute. You can see that since we have done that, since we did resurface, add that extra paved shoulder, it's greatly reduced the amount of off-tracking by vehicles, the amount of edge-rudding that is developing, so it is a much safer condition. Our own maintenance forces are out there a lot less on this portion that does have the widened shoulder on it. And you can see here where we stopped the paved shoulder, it goes back to the edge rut. So in 2017, in talking with our then Assistant County Attorney Pete Burke, we looked at the Code of Iowa and found a section that a county is able to do some work in certain areas, in certain cities, if they meet this definition. So Iowa Code 314.5 says that we can do improvements to roadways based on safety, based on, you know, the need to resurface it, the need to maintain and take care of that roadway. The authority does not apply to extensions of secondary roads located in cities over 2,500, 2,500 population, and where the homes and businesses are averaged less than 200 feet apart. So if it's in, like a residential area, that, that may not apply. So the population of Raymond is less than 2,500, and at that time in 2017, we did pay for that, that paved shoulder from Young Road up to about 1,326 feet to the north, where the split jurisdiction stops and it becomes then completely the city of Raymond on both sides of the road. At that time, we spent approximately $7,000 for that paved shoulder. And our total cost of the paving the shoulders from the Gilbertville city limits to the north was about $112,000. Just to look at the 28E maintenance agreement, it says that we will agree to maintain portions of Raymond Road and portions of Dubuque Road, and that we will assess them. We will invoice within 30 days the city of Raymond for the work we do out there. So again, it's not so much that our maintenance is costing a lot of money to the city of Raymond, it's just becoming a lot of attention to detail on this portion of Raymond Road because it is very constant that there is an edge rut out there. I've showed you this. I've given you copies of this. You can see the actual overview of the project. So this is Young Road, and the east side of the road for 1,326 feet is Blackhawk County. On the west side of the road is the city of Raymond, and it's the green portion that's the city of Raymond, and then going forward from the split portion to Dubuque Road, that of course is the entirety of the city of Raymond. So our timeline for getting this work done is we want to get this in an Iowa DOT letting in November of 2025, which there's a lot of requirements for us doing so. We've got to get our plans ready and sent into the DOT by July of 2025. We like to get them sent in for a preliminary check in April, so really by February, mid to late February of next year, we want to have our plans set complete, so we need to know what to include in this project. Of course, this would affect our five-year plan. You'll see there's a difference of $280,000 that we're talking about. We can either reprogram this, we can program this in other ways, in other projects, if we don't have to include the shared portion. Okay, so some proposed options. In this, you'll want to refer to that handout that I've given you. We feel that as a minimum, that we would like to ask the city of Raymond to participate in the split portion of the Colden Place resurfacing, and that would be for the 1,326 feet, so that we can resurface our entire, the entire roadway from Young Road up to the split portion. Obviously, we can't resurface half the road. We would like, we feel that the road is time. It's, was last paved in 2009. We feel it is time to resurface our portion. We can't do half of a roadway, of course, so we would like to be able to include the city of Raymond's, the split portion. And I just told you that there is some precedent for that based on what we've done in the past. Moving forward into the portion that is completely in the city of Raymond, it would be advisable to add those widened shoulders, two feet on each side of this portion of Raymond Road. We figure that cost is approximately $70,000. And then to Colden Place recycle, that, the entire portion up to Dubuque Road would be another $140,000. So the entirety would be $280,000 to complete this work up to Dubuque Road. So really, we'd, I'm asking that there be consideration from this Board, as well as the mayor of Raymond is with us today, to discuss either a cost sharing, a loan, perhaps us deferring payments as long as we can, per DOT standards or rules, excuse me. And at this point, I feel like it's a conversation between elected officials. I just wanted to present all the information, and I'd like to invite Mr., our mayor Vic, to offer any comments or yourselves.
Kathy, you did mention just now of deferring payments, but did you mean also deferring work as well? Is a possibility or?
So we believe that we would obviously like to have the work included all in one contract, so we would at least be able to, we would like to be able to resurface our portion from Young Road north, the 1,326 feet, and include the city of Raymond's portion. So if we're not able to do that, we would have to defer to whenever the city of Raymond is coming back and doing their resurfacing on the roadway.
Kathy, could you send the Board a copy of the 2080 agreement, most specifically the portion of road that you're talking about and the current agreement we have with them? Could you send that copy to the Board?
Absolutely.
And the presentation, I don't know if you've sent that yet either.
I didn't, and I will forward you all the presentation.
Just to give you, just to give you a little bit of history, the city of Raymond, we are also rebuilding Lafayette. Seems to be about the same time. Kathy's been pretty gracious about letting us know, and I'm like, wow, I got a three-and-a-half-million-dollar project going on, now this is coming in. It's not that we're strapped, it's just that we got 300-some homes. You can, you can see my staff is one person in an office. I've got an engineer in Des Moines and Dubuque. This kind of, that would really strap us down. Along with this, going together and cooperating together as a county and a city, this would streamline the project a lot better, where we can just send you a check for paying the bill. We're not asking for charity. We're asking to pay a fair share. I'm also gracious that she's offered this to us, and hopefully the Board can work together with us, which we should be doing all along. I know the last administration wasn't working very well. It was a constant battle. That's why that extended curb was not done, because it was, I think it was $30,000 to put that extended road to keep the trucks from going off the road and degrading the road. They voted that down, $30,000. Now we're coming up with the whole road, and I told her, I said, we need to cooperate together. So this is a win-win for everybody, so. You got any more questions?
Yeah, I think it absolutely makes sense to be doing this all at the same time. Are you, as far as your cash flow, are you looking, Kathy mentioned making payments to us or a loan?
That'd be fine. That'd be fine. Whatever works, whatever works. I've talked to the council. We didn't vote on it. Still got a vote on it, but there's support from the council on this that needs to be done, so it's, I'm not just coming up here and throwing mud at the wall and hope it sticks, but it's, I have support.
I'd be supportive of a payment schedule if that's what we need to do to make it work on your end.
Yeah. So like I said, we're a small town, and this, this works great for us. Anything else?
All right.
Makes sense.
Take a look at how we can do it, or how we see that, I guess, or contract.
Are there any other development plans with, I noticed the Dollar General going up. Of course, they sprout up really quickly as they, but. up, of course, they sprout up really quickly, as they, but you have other kind of plans in that area too?
Nothing definite, but there is, I can tell you that. There's, I believe, two more lots going to be for sale, that are for sale to expand. There is, there was a truck stop going to be developed out there two years ago, I believe, and that fell through, ended up going somewhere, they went to Waterloo. So there's room for expansion out there. I mean, I think it's going to really grow, because some of the businesses in town, people are seeing that they're doing very well. And we've also got one shop that just opened up, they've been open a year and a half, and they won best of the best two years in a row. How is that, you know, here? So it's growing out there, it's going to grow.
Is that, just checking, is that area in a TIF? Or do you TIF out there?
No, no, we have no TIF in town yet.
Yeah, no, no, no.
We did.
Just don't say yet.
We're, we're looking to grow, Raymond's looking to grow. Okay, anything else?
No, thank you for being here today.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
All right.
So your timeline, Kathy, then, is fairly immediate for them, for us, to consider this or going forward on it, so that you have the information to do your plan?
Right. Yes, we would like a decision to be made as far as what we're including in our project by the first part of February.
All right. We're sitting here.
I mean, I, I'm on board now, so we need to put it on another agenda to give you kind of official, I don't know if that's what you just need.
Yes, I, I just put it on for discussion today. I, I know there's a lot of information to share here and to think about, so I didn't want to necessarily say that anyway.
Well, we haven't really talked about the details of what would be included in that, so that would have to be something, I guess, discussed, see if it's acceptable to you as well as us. As far as payment plans and that type of thing, and timelines and.
Just let us know. I mean, we, it's easier for us to work that out than it is to go get a loan, bond, and all that. Like I said, we're, we're on Lafayette Road, which is a, you know, that three and a half million dollar project, and we've got so many things going on right now, a lot of home impro, a lot of roads and home improvements. I've got a pretty short staff, so.
I was gonna say, it sounds like it's a little more manpower almost.
Right, right. I mean, this really helps out. This is just basically sending a check and, you know, she's got to do all the work.
And are you, are you on board for option, option two, which, because I, I would just assume we do it all the, kind of the right way?
Yeah.
Do the whole?
Sure. I'd, you know, just go by what the engineer says.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Kathy's plan was acceptable, it was just.
Oh, yes.
Financing of it right now, or the manpower, I guess, to do the work, it sounds like, Gary.
Right.
Okay. See if you like our terms.
Okay, cool.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else on?
So I should proceed with incorporating the entire project into our project, it sounds like, and then we're getting those costs. I mean, we, we have a rough cost already. And then I should proceed, we will take a look at the DOT rules as far as when we have to pay, you know, we have to pay our contractors in a timely fashion so that it's wrapped, and we have to submit a statement of completion, so we will have to, probably by the end of next calendar, excuse me, the end of calendar of 2026, which would be when the project takes place, we will have to have everything wrapped up and paid for, so at that point it would probably become some sort of loan or to the city of Raymond.
Didn't sound like that was an issue though, as far as the repayment plan. Okay.
Okay, I will keep you updated then.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item D, the discussion slash update on Pinecrest Campus Project and the Inflation Reduction Act.
Morning Board, Rory Giving, Facilities Director. I have asked Representative from Modus Engineering and also Representative from Envision, all we have today is Representative from Modus, so I will try to touch on this the best that I can. But last week, we had met with our municipal advisor, Baker Tilly, to talk about the projects over at the Pinecrest Campus, and whether or not those projects, if that Inflation Reduction Act applied to it. And so it was a pretty extensive thorough review of those projects, and if you recall, under the VA, we do have an alternate under that project, which is, one of the alternates is a solar array. The solar array is certainly eligible for that Inflation Reduction Act, and it appears that we can get anywhere from a 30 to 50% back from that. And then we are also under a megawatt, which it sounds like that megawatt is kind of the threshold. If you go over a megawatt, then there's other requirements that you have to follow, but beings that were under a megawatt, items such as like prevailing wages, apprenticeship requirements, those don't apply because of that threshold, being underneath that threshold. I can let Mike speak to this a little bit more in regards to the solar project, if you have any questions to that.
Yes, Mike Broke with Modus Engineering. Like Rory mentioned, that we had a, a meeting with Baker Tilly on Friday, just to confirm that how we were proceeding, that we did, we followed the, the proper procedures of having this being bid without making sure we had any paperwork, so we weren't misstepping and, and not having the opportunity of having the 30 to 50% Reduction Act. And Baker Tilly informed us that, that we were doing everything correct so far, and that once the, the alternate comes, the bids come in, and the board approves the alternate, if it's, if that works out that way, then, then there'd be further discussions and be making sure that the paperwork, proper paperwork gets submitted.
What, what is the wattage that we're looking at?
Right now, it's 140 KW system. So relatively small system, but it's a, it's a smaller facility as well.
Is, I mean, I would honestly prefer that we were going prevailing wage on it, because I think that's just better for the economy.
I tend, I actually tend to agree. I understand that we may not be required by statute because of a threshold, but I do think there's, from, from sets of values, I'd, I'd prefer to be at that prevailing wage and then adhere to some of those, some of those labor standards as well.
I would say if that, if that's the, the board's desire, that with that being a alternate bid of a, of a larger project, that the project would probably, may also have to be under prevailing wages as well, potentially, because trying to, trying to have a, a electrician perform the work for that alternate, and then also do work under the base bid, which would be the, the building proper, trying to, trying to have that accounting there may be problematic. Doesn't mean that we couldn't, we couldn't set aside just that alternate, but there, there definitely would be some confusion. We'd have to have some really good communication and walking through that.
Remember too, that there is a practical consideration here, and I've, Tim Turnus has given me some warning about this. We've seen some of this play out in some of our other ARPA project bidding. If we get the bids, prevailing wage, you know, is not a concern, obviously, but right now, we haven't seen a lot of bids when we've requested them on things, and so if we potentially reduce that bidder pool, there could be concern about meeting our December 31 contracting deadline. And then, so far as I can tell, any, any ARPA funds that haven't been contracted by that date would be forfeited.
Would wages be disclosed in those bids as part of that process?
I don't know what the wages would be in bids, I can't speak to that. I'm just going off talking to Tim Turnus on this issue, because they bid many, many construction projects, or at least I presume they do. But that is, but I can't say that, I've talked to people, we do have people who, you know, we do have a pool of contractors who would pay prevailing wages.
Are we required to take lowest bid?
We're required right now by federal, federal procurement law to take lowest bid. However, when we go under, if we go under Inflation Reduction Act and we make prevailing wage a condition of it, well then it would be lowest bid among those bidders who are who are meeting those requirements.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's okay to, to parcel this out from, because this is the only portion that we'd be using Inflation Reduction Act dollars, and that's definitely the spirit of that legislation, and those requirements were put in there because it's best for economic stimulus and job growth in the community, and so I, I, I think we, I think that's how we should move forward.
Yeah, it's, it's not impossible, it's just more just communication.
And since, you know, and even if, you know, part of your getting money back on this, which, they didn't make that announcement, I did a little bit of digging, and it was, I think the, the US Treasury announced that in March of this last year, oh, that, that the local governments were actually eligible, because typically, you know, you hear tax credit, I just automatically, okay, that doesn't apply to us. But they made that, kind of, put out that guidance, I think, this last spring.
So when you talk about the communication part of it, like I said, we can parcel it out, obviously, and try that.
So what that, what that means is that we would just have to have some clarification in our documents. Documents have been sent out, I think they're actually going to the printers this morning for both projects, and so now we, we move into addendum phases, and we'll, we'll clarify then addendum. There's also a pre-bid meeting that we will also communicate that as well, and reach out to any of the electricians and solar manufacturers that would be bidding, and have those communications as well. So just trying to limit the confusion on bid day, because bid day gets very crazy at times, and so.
And I think, Mike, you'll, your firm will also have to do the weekly wage testing and record keeping for that.
Yep.
And do you, does anybody know, because I'm just thinking about, because I'm still just digesting that we're actually eligible for these, these dollars, have what the lifespan of, I mean, beyond ARPA dollars, but just the Inflation Reduction Act dollars, like how long, what's the life of that legislation that that, that we would be eligible possibly for other? There's other solar projects we looked at that weren't financially viable at the time, that maybe with this added to it, maybe, maybe the courthouse and the jail will become viable.
Yeah, that's a great question, Chris. I don't know if it's a, if it's dependent on the money, if there's a, if they're set aside, if the, if the government has set aside a certain amount of money, and when that money is depleted, then that program is ended, or if they're, if they will renew that on a basis, I, I will, I will look into that.
Okay.
That's a great question. I missed, I was always assuming that there's a, they'll probably be going on for the next couple of years, but I, great question though.
Because that might be the difference of what makes, make more sense on, on these buildings.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, not only, not only just solar, you're also talking geothermal as another item that falls underneath that eligible energy property type requirement.
Yeah, we, we looked at, we did look at, we did look at some of that briefly at Pinecrest, since we were updating the ventilation system, but there is, there had been too much of invested upgrades already to, to make that big of a switch to, to, to take advantage of the geo, it's just, the boilers and the chillers have already been, are relatively new, so it, it, it didn't make sense at that time. But doesn't mean that other projects can, shouldn't be looked at as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then on the other side of that, so that's the solar, the other question that we brought to Baker Tilly is essentially what is classified as an eligible energy property, and solar, geothermal, small wind energy property, battery cells from a solar, those are all types of, of, of projects that would make this eligible. So we specifically asked them about the building envelope portion of the, of the project, and they did indicate that that would not be eligible, because it does not fall underneath that eligible energy property category, if that makes sense. So I think it was a productive meeting. It does sound like paperwork wise, for the solar portion of it anyway, there's a registration, there is some tax paperwork after the project is completing and is producing energy, and so at that time, we would probably want to entertain some, some bids, if that's something that we do need to outsource, so.
And I, and I think it'd be good for multiple departments to be looking at the Inflation Reduction Act for things that might be eligible, whether it's electrical vehicle fleet, they've come a long way, I don't want those ugly Tesla trucks, I'll say that right now. Don't give our money to Elon Musk. But, but, and I think charging stations and that kind of stuff, so I think that we should be looking at ways to, to utilize those dollars if it's possible.
Any other questions? I, you know, I also sent you out an email yesterday, just kind of summarizing that meeting, any questions from that summary, or?
No, maybe a quick question for Mike on, on the bids. I know that, I think last week, we talked about staggering the openings. So Mike's point about could this hamper, could this dampen the response rate on some of those bids, can we bump, bump the part that we just discussed up a little bit, so that it's earlier on, so that if we have to pivot, because we don't get a response, will we have enough time to make that pivot, or are we sort of?
Avis, that's a great point, because this project that's being submitted right now is going to be the first one that's going to be bid.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yep, the other projects that, that Modus is working directly with the county, we're still, we're still in design. Those will be finished next Monday, Tuesday, and, and then, so there'll be like a week, we can have a stagger there for that bid, so the project we're talking about right now, bids will be back first.
So in the event that we don't receive a bid back, we should have enough time to put that back out, or are we?
No, we won't. We just need to do a good job on making sure that someone bids the project.
Thank you.
So we will, so we will, we will try.
Okay.
We, we will.
We know you will, but thank you, yeah.
All right, anything else? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mike.
All right, any reports, your information from the board? I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.